Okay, welcome to the Urbana City Council meeting. We'll start this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand for that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Barnes?
Yes.
Bowersox?
Yes.
Chinoweth?
Yes.
Lewis?
I start.
Present.
Present.
Roberts?
Here.
Smythe?
Here.
Stevenson?
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
First, we have approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Seconded.
Motion by Ms. Barnes, seconded by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, under petitions and communications, I would like to start. I have a proclamation by the Mayor of the City of Urbana. Whereas, and I'd like Chief Adair to come up here. Somewhere on camera. Whereas Chief Adair honorably served in the United States Air Force from August 29, 1963 until August 29, 1967, serving in a military police capacity. And whereas Chief Adair has been actively employed in the law enforcement profession for over 38 years, with 27 years at the Memphis, Tennessee Police Department, where he rose to the position of Deputy Director. And whereas Chief Adair has been the Chief of Police of the Urbana Police Department since November 1, 1994, thus serving over 11 years as Urbana's top law enforcement executive. And whereas Chief Adair's longevity in this position easily makes him the chief with the longest tenure at Urbana in over 35 years. And whereas Chief Adair has promoted professionalism in law enforcement by being appointed to serve on the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board since October 5, 2000. And whereas Chief Adair has served on countless local boards of directors such as the Don Moyer Boys and Girls Club. And whereas Chief Adair has been a longtime member of several professional organizations such as the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, the International and Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police, as well as the FBI National Academy Association. And whereas Chief Adair stood firm in his belief that professional advancement is only achieved through training and education. His constant support of training for all levels of employees at the Urbana Police Department is most noticeable in the professional reputation that the department enjoys statewide. And whereas Chief Adair maintains strong beliefs that in order for the Police Department to be successful, it needed strong citizen input and involvement. To this end, he promoted this philosophy throughout the department with community-oriented policing, as well as officer and citizen recognition. Whereas Chief Adair will be truly missed by the employees and residents of the City of Urbana. Now therefore I, Laurel Lunt Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim December 8, 2005, as Eddie B. Adair Day in the City of Urbana and encourage everyone to recognize Chief Adair for his many accomplishments and to wish him well in all his future endeavors. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the City Council? I have some names here. Brian Conway. Did you want to say anything?
Phil first.
Sure. Mr. Phil? Or do you want to wait until your topic comes up? Okay. Gary Seiko?
I believe in Eric.
You can address the council now if you want. I mean, it's next on the agenda.
Sorry?
Yes, go ahead. Just come and state your name and address, please.
My name is Gary Seiko. I've lived at 506 West Ramon since 1980. And I'm here because of the opportunity we have to provide a space for bicycles on the Lincoln Avenue improvement. And I've been hearing that some rumors of opposition to that, and perhaps bicycles should not even be allowed there. So I just wanted to say a few things about that. I have used a bicycle as my primary means of transportation ever since I've been here since 1980. And there is, I see, a need, bicycles to be a serious alternative. We need to provide, I think, a lot more of that in Champaign, to this of Urbana, such as bike lanes in places with a bicycle. And you should be on places that grow, three lottery that allow you to get from one place to the other. I think there may be some conception of bicycles to be on little side streets. But just like anybody else, if you want to get someplace, you want to be able to get on a sort of a main street that will get you there, as you find in places like Chicago and Tucson and St. Paul, Minneapolis, places that I'm familiar with. There are sort of three main changes that I personally have experienced and that I've read about through the research about bicycles, making the cars and other waterized traffic. One is not having enough space and having the force of traffic to go around and the problems I've caused, cars pulling out in front of you from parking lanes. And related to that is getting dorked. Does anybody know what means to get dorked?
I don't know.
I've got your word, just have to go find. And also at intersections, obviously, getting across major areas from a side street example, or just people not seeing you. And so these are the three main dangers that I've seen them in. Providing some space on each side of Lincoln Avenue would really eliminate the life span of those three things. You would have space there. There may be a fair amount of traffic, but if there is space, it's going to be a lot better than my riding on University and other places where there isn't space, or Lincoln Avenue right now. There's not a parking lane there, so that eliminates the problem of cars parking in front or pulling out in front and getting dorked. And putting in the self, the traffic signals also is a safety measure too, because I feel less safer behind a red light and a stop sign, because stop signs, people often don't see a cyclist coming. I have people on Lincoln and Pennsylvania, just come, you know, right at me and you can see right through you. So these improvements providing the four and a half feet on the side of Lincoln Avenue would really allow all those three things, major improvements, to be made. And I think that gives the safest little bit of artery that we have in Urbana for cyclists. So I just wanted to put my two cents in from the perspective of a person who uses a bicycle in Urbana as a serious form of transportation.
Mr. Roberts?
As a bicycle user, do you feel it is more dangerous to have? I'm thinking about the bus traffic on Lincoln Avenue. There are two routes that regularly stop and discharge passengers on Lincoln Avenue. And do you feel it is more dangerous to have the bus go to a traffic pullout that would be, would require the bus to cross the bike lane to get to it? Or is it better to keep the bus in the lane in which it's traveling, stop, discharge the passengers, and then continue on?
Well, there really not much opportunity for me to see that down here. If they're bringing it over, I can only sort of imagine, is it where, is it only on, I think, Green? Isn't it part of the Union where they sort of?
And there are a few on Springfield.
Yeah.
By the law library.
Yeah.
I mean, not the law library, the engineering library.
I mean, I would prefer to be able to get around them if they're off to the side, just like any other traffic coming into my, and this would be rather than having to stop and wait behind them.
But they would be crossing the bicycle path.
Yeah, but I mean, that happens all the time, of people making right turns and you just sort of watch. The fact that you're in your own lane often makes the traffic sort of watch for you a little bit more anyway. But I would prefer to have them off in a pullout, from the limited experience I've had with those types of situations, rather than having to stop and wait behind them, even though they're crossing in front. I see what you're saying.
Because there's a blind side on the bus.
Yeah.
Well, I'm assuming that there would be difficulty in seeing a cyclist coming up from the back.
But I think cyclists, like anybody, you can treat buses, and they're big, and always be, try to stay away from them. So it's hard to get snuck up, you know, by the bus or where it is, you know, and sneak up on you. So I really don't see that.
Thank you.
Much.
Thanks.
Okay, Cynthia Hoyle? Would you please come and state your name and address? Thanks.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Hoyle, and I live at 2207 South Hightower. And I care before you tonight, wearing more than one hat, a resident of the community, I'm a transportation planner. I served on community of the Institute of Transportation Engineers that wrote the recommended practices for designing safety of pedestrian facilities. And I also published a book through the American Planning Association titled Traffic Calming. My husband works on campus, and he has used the bus or a bike to get to work. And two years ago, this last November, on his way to work, using the bike lane system on campus, he had a bike wreck and was knocked unconscious. So I have concerns about the safety of the bike system, and I have two children too, who also bike and use the buses. I talked, Councilor Bowersox called me, and I also talked with the city attorney and provided some input on this topic. One of the problems is that the design that you have was designed primarily to improve pedestrian safety, and it was, it uses traffic calming to do that. It did not design for a bike lane. And so you don't have, officially have a bike lane included in this design. I provided to Councilor Bowersox the Chicago Bike Lane Design Guide. And Chicago is seen as a leader in this country. They are looked to all around the nation for their bicycle facilities and designs. They have several designs in there with bike lanes and buses, a variety of configurations depending on the street, and whether they have parking and what kind of intersections, et cetera. So if you were to want a bike lane, you might look to them for an example. But the current configuration that you have was primarily done by the expertise of the Campus Area Transportation Study Group to improve safety for pedestrians. They did consider bicyclists in terms of being able to cross at intersections, which is a big problem right now, because with the stop signs, you don't have good gaps. And the motorists get confused about whose turn it is, and so the bicyclist or the pedestrian tries to venture across, and then someone starts going, and so it creates a hazard. And I'm sure Bill Gray has told you all of these things. But I wanted to come before you tonight and encourage you to adopt this design. And if you would like to then move to the next level and include bike lanes and take a look at bus pullouts, then that needs to be studied again, because that would be a different design. What you have now does not include bike lanes, although this design provides for better safety for bicyclists by the fact that there is a shoulder and there are stop signals, stoplights, and that sort of thing. So I wanted to come in and suggest that to you. My daughter used to go to Home High, and my husband and daughter would ride, and crossing Lincoln was a hair-raising experience. And so I think that for our community to provide people with true choices and mobility, we need to go ahead and move forward with this design. And if we want to improve on it, then I think that that takes another study and another look at how to do that.
Could you tell me if the Chicago bike lanes have the five-foot width, or are they substandard?
Yeah, we talked about that. They, what they said in here is that they recommend five feet. But they also have in here on page five, they say four-foot minimum bike lane width. So, you know, there's a lot of play here in terms of who recommends what, because they say that Ash-toe and some agencies will strip bike lanes as narrow as four feet wide in certain situations. Now, they did put a proviso on this. They said, "If you propose to use four-foot bike lanes, make sure that the four feet does not include a joint with the gutter pan, or that drainage grates take up some of the width, and that it should be clear of all surface irregularities." So they're saying if you've only got four feet, then you have to be absolutely sure that you have a clear space for the bicyclists.
Any other question? Ms. Chinoweth?
Thank you, Cynthia. Do you, is this document online, or would it be easy for me to get a copy of it, the document?
Yes, it is online, and I sent, did I send you the URL or a copy of it? I don't remember.
Yeah, I have the URL. I'd be happy to share it with council.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Sure.
Did you have any involvement in, on the Green Street striping that's been done between Fourth and Neal?
That was planned before I moved here, and then it was executed pretty much right as I was moving here. I can tell you just anecdotally, my husband has a position, joint position in math and physics, and he used to be going across Wright Street and over to Loomis. And he told me that he was sure he was going to be run over and killed at some point in his career here. That was before they put all of the changes in. And once they put the changes in, he said, "I think now I'm going to be able to go back and forth without being run over." You know, he still has some, he would like to see a little bit of tinkering there, but he, as a pedestrian, feels much safer crossing there than he did previously. I think the CATS study and the Transit District are also looking at Green Street, and I'm sure you all are aware that they are doing that, because there's still changes that need to be made to improve safety from Wright to Lincoln.
I'm actually referring to the champagne side.
The champagne side?
Between Fourth and Neal, where they have added shoulders.
Right.
Your husband rides that?
He does not ride on that part of it, no.
Okay.
He does not. To the best of my knowledge, they have not had any problems with that design in terms of accidents with bicyclists, but I can't tell you that authoritatively.
Do you know if that's four feet with the curb and gutter, or is it?
I do not.
I didn't get a chance to go out and measure it.
Four and a half.
It's four and a half with the gutter, then?
I think without the gutter. I'm not sure about that, but I think asphalt's four and a half.
So with or without the stripe, then?
I think without the stripe.
Without the stripe, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't involved in that part of it, and it sort of all happened right after I got here.
Ms. Chinoweth?
Follow-up question. Do you have a professional opinion on the eight-foot wide paths that are shared use bicycle pedestrian paths, like a path that is along Lincoln Avenue to the, is south of, of Florida and extends to the west of Florida? Do you have an opinion on that kind of bike path along stretches of areas like, for example, from Nevada to Pennsylvania Avenue on the west side? There aren't, there aren't car crossings at that location. And so one of the things that I hope to propose this evening is for us to investigate adding three feet of pavement to the five feet of pavement, which is currently on the west side, which we can do at every point except a Line Eye Grove area. So I'm wondering if you have an opinion on that before we get into the discussion.
Well, I can tell you the following things. You have two groups of cyclists, those that will only ride on paths, and those that will only ride in the street. And then there's, I guess, some of us that are willing to cross back and forth. So I think, but having both types of facilities is good, if you want to provide all the mobility options. On sidewalks, the minimum width recommended right now nationally is five feet. That's for pedestrians. I think the ideal width, if you're having, if you have a multi-use path, is 10 feet, but eight feet is better than five feet. So I, if you were going to widen it and you do have enough right-of-way space, I would say that 10 feet would be preferable, if that's an option. If you don't have that option, then, you know, eight feet is certainly an improvement on five. My understanding is that except for in certain areas, bicyclists are allowed to ride on sidewalks. And with the heavy pedestrian traffic that you have in that area, that's not something that you want on a five-foot sidewalk.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone else who'd like to address the council? Okay, the next item is old business. Resolution number 2005-11-022R, a resolution of support for improvements to Lincoln Avenue, Lincoln Avenue traffic signals and striping.
Oh, go ahead, I'm just setting up.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yeah, I can make a motion before we get into discussion, and I would move that we pass this resolution tonight with an amendment that I provided on everyone's desk. This is an amendment that adds a new section, and I can speak to it.
Okay, is there a second to your?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smythe.
I have a question.
Yes.
Excuse me, could it be read into the record and also for the audience to hear?
Yes. So the, I won't read the original resolution, if that's okay?
That's fine.
I will just read the amendment. So the original resolution is a resolution that we all passed unanimously out of committee in November, that direct staff to generally move forward with the new Lincoln design as it was created by the consultants, and to, you know, discuss with the MTD, the issue of bus pullouts, and all these other issues. The amendment is as follows, that we add Section 3, "The provision of a shared use area for bicycles shall not be finalized until the mayor and the council have additional information from the legal department about the policies and practices of other communities with such mixed-use plans. Further, the Public Works Department is directed to evaluate the feasibility of expanding the shared use area of the Lincoln Avenue improvements to meet state and national standards for bicycle traffic. These questions shall be answered prior to the commencement of construction and should be accorded high priority by both the legal department and the Public Works Department." And then we would renumber Section 3 to become Section 4 of the original resolution. And I can briefly speak to that. The main goal of these improvements on Lincoln Avenue, we've discussed this for many weeks, is improving pedestrian safety, providing shorter crossing distances, crosswalks, gapping the traffic, and all of these things which we've heard many times. And it would be nice to get the resolution done so that staff can move forward with that, which is the main goal of these Lincoln Avenue improvements. Furthermore, the issue of the bike path isn't resolved, or of the shared painted shoulder or the shared use area, whatever we call it, and the provision of bike amenities isn't resolved. So this amendment seeks to ask staff to do two things, so that we can get resolution. First, to ask the legal department to continue their research. They've only had a short time. I met with Jim Getz this morning, and there are still questions about what other communities have done, what Chicago has done, such that they have created these bike paths and been able to provide a bike network on-street, you know, without the concern of liability. And so we want to know the answer to that. Second, this amendment asks Public Works to tell us what the cost and impact would be of creating an actual five-foot lane, if that's possible somehow, so that we would have the Ash-toe five-foot standard bike lane. So those two questions should be answered and brought back to council, so that that piece of the plan can be finalized before any construction happens. That's the amendment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about it.
Charlie, before we do a vote on the amendment?
Actually, this, this graph is, or this picture's for Danielle, whenever she wants to talk about it. I'd like to thank Brandon for, for working on, on this additional section of the resolution. I think we're making progress, and I'd like to thank Jim for, for digging up what he has dug up. Obviously, other communities are doing stuff. We need to move forward, we need to do something for bicyclists in addition to everything else. And as long as we move forward, I'll be pretty happy. I have one question for Mr. Gray, which is, could you remind me real quickly, are we, do we have to do 11-foot lanes? Bill, do we have to do 11-foot lanes to get state funding, or can we do 11-foot and 10-foot for the turn lane? Are we, are we required to do 11-foot wide lanes on this?
We haven't actually submitted our intersection design to IDOT yet. I think that it's going down this week, so that question will be answered very soon. But the balance of the, excluding the intersections, that's our intention, to do 2 and 10 and a half-foot wide lane.
Each one would be 10 and a half.
Except for the middle one.
Okay, the middle lane would be how wide?
10, 10 and a half.
10, 10 and a half.
Somewhere in that area.
Okay. Yeah, because I know that the shoulders, regardless of what we do for bicyclists, will be sort of useful for even the pedestrians along there. I was standing at, on the west side, opposite Iowa Street today. Three of us were standing there about 10 feet apart, and cars are going by, waiting for that, you know, to cross there, Frogger-style, and, you know, no gaps are developing, and we see a bus coming. And everybody takes two steps back away from the curb as the bus goes by, you know. It's, those lanes are, and Danielle and I were out measuring this weekend, the lane on the inside is only eight and a half feet, so it gives you the six inches of the gutter, and those buses are eight and a half feet wide. I mean, they fill the lane completely. So some, some shoulder space there will be welcome to the pedestrians, at least.
Ms. Chinoweth?
Two quick questions. Thank you to Brandon and Jim for working out some things so that we can move forward, and also have our concerns around bicycle safety and the need to have amenities for bicyclists addressed. My first question is to Brandon, and then I have one for Bill. Brandon, is it your intention in your motion, when you say that the question shall be answered prior to the commencement of construction, to include the striping and the painting? So is that the intention of your motion?
Yes, that is the intention, that construction includes any painting, any changes, any grading.
Okay.
Activities, and we could add painting if, if putting that word in helps.
Okay. Well, I think as long as it's clear on council floor that that's what you mean, I think that this is fine. My question for Mr. Gray is, in, in the cursory amount of research that I have done on this since, Jim asked me to send him some things in terms of, you know, I'm an avid bicyclist, so I've been all over the state, and I've biked in bike lanes all over the state, and I'm always surprised to hear that we can't have bike lanes, because I see them elsewhere. But, so he asked me to send him some things, and I started reading through the Illinois League of Bicyclists website, and they talk, I know that there was a proposal, perhaps we can make bicyclists bike on the sidewalk. And my sense of that was that that's crazy dangerous for pedestrians, and I've seen it be particularly dangerous on, on campus. So, but, but I looked at what the Illinois Municipal League, Illinois League of Bicyclists said, and they said that when there's large stretches of sidewalk that do not have crossing streets, so for example, from Nevada to Pennsylvania, there are some pullouts for the residence halls, but there's not a crossing street, that actually, that would be the only place they would, they would support a kind of shared use bicycle path. Otherwise, what you have is bicyclists who basically are off the street, not seen by cars, when they go to cross the intersection, they're hit. And I have personally experienced this, and I'm sure any of the bikers in the audience have also seen this, have you ever biked on a sidewalk? So the, so my question is, well, so what they said is, but if there's a long stretch, a multi-use bike path that is a minimum of, of eight feet could be appropriate in those circumstances. So Charlie and I went out and we walked, we basically, this is, I think this is right near FARPR, and we walked and biked this stretch here, and we actually measured to see, is there three more feet of right-of-way next to the five feet of right-of-way, where we could add additional paving on the west side of the street and make that into a multi-use path, thus allowing us on the east side of the street to have a full five feet, if not five and a half feet, maybe even six feet, for those bicyclists who want, but some large amount of space for a bicycle that's marked, that has marking on the street, and that tells cars, you know, yield to bicyclists in this area. So you would have two more safe bike lanes rather than two lanes that we're talking about now, that, that are kind of minimum, minimum safety requirements in terms of lanes. So my question is, in the engineering that's happened during the states of CATS, has there been a discussion of an offlane, of an off-street, multi-use, at least eight-foot lane on the west side? What's the history behind that discussion? What were the results, et cetera? And how do you feel about looking into that as maybe a And how do you feel about looking into that as maybe a solution to some of the concerns that have been raised?
There really has been no CATS one or, excuse me, CATS two discussion on bike paths, bike lanes on campus. We talked about earlier, that part was deleted in the scope of services for the CATS two study. Recent CATS technical committee discussions have talked about a CATS three, if you will, study, which would encompass certainly addressing the bike master planning in the university district, which hasn't been done to date, along with some other items in a scope of work. So we've not had that discussion on Lincoln Avenue or anywhere else for that matter. The only place in CATS two that we addressed bike lane issues where there was an existing bike lane within the rideaway, within the roadway, such as on Wright Street, for example, or on Matthews, for example. But where there were off-street bike paths on campus, we did not get into discussion. Or where there was no bike lane existing, we did not get into those streets for that discussion.
Okay.
Is what you're suggesting possible? Yes, it's possible, we just haven't had that discussion.
So if, I know it's slightly off-topic in terms of the amendment, but if the council would just entertain this line of questioning. If, a couple of questions. One is, the property on the west side of the street, is it city property or is it university property all the way up to the curb?
We would want to verify, but for the most part, I think it's almost all U of I property or foundation property. The exception would be where the Jimmy John's restaurant is in that area. That would be private property. But I believe from there south, it's probably some form of state-owned property.
Is the, are the sidewalks owned by the university on the west side?
To the best of my knowledge, that's within our rideaway of Lincoln Avenue and those are city responsibilities, city sidewalks.
And how many feet beyond that do you, do you know?
Perhaps about a foot at best.
Okay.
So to add three feet or more would require some form of easement approval from the university or from the state.
Typically, when you add to a section of sidewalk, do you, for a multi-lane, for a multi-use path, would you add a section or would you actually have to redo the entire sidewalk? And if you have to add a section, do you have a sense of some kind of like cost per linear foot of additions to sidewalk? Or some picture of what we might be talking about cost-wise?
One, you'd have to look a little bit at the grades to see if there are drainage-related impacts. Are there other appurtenances such as streetlights, hydrants, trees, that sort of thing that might be in the way? But you could probably add a three-foot width if all, you know, if there's clearances and drainage issues are not there. At the same time, if there are some cracked or bad-conditioned sidewalks existing, you'd want to take care of that at that time, too. But we have added a three-foot or four-foot wide ribbon or adjacent slab of concrete to an existing sidewalk before. Outside of maybe an occasional weed that grows between that crack, it works pretty well. An example I can think of is in front of the former Jerry's IGA on South Philo. I think we did that, where there was a four-foot sidewalk and we added four feet to it. So it's an acceptable means of adding a, defining the multis.
Okay, just a comment is, when we walked this, we actually were measuring throughout the whole area. And there were only two spots between Nevada and Florida where there is a multi-use bike path that it would actually join up with. And that's that fire hydrant right there that would, is about six inches, at most, six inches, three to six inches into a three-foot addition. And the Illini Grove area, which has the five feet, and then there's actually retaining wall. At that point, I think we'd have to figure out what to do during the Illini Grove section. But every other section, I don't know about drainage, but in terms of encumbrances, this was the only spot that we found. Because Charlie had some comments.
Mr. Smythe.
Yeah, just to add to that, I just want to remind people that directly to the south of this is a, is an eight-foot multi-use path that runs down all the way to Windsor Avenue, connecting up with the bike path there. This bike path actually veers to the, right where I'm standing, I'm standing in the part that veers to the, to the west here and runs to the west end of FARPAR and then heads north and joins the other bike paths there. So if you, you know, the issue is, if you wanted to connect up Lincoln Avenue with the existing bike path that goes to the south of Florida, this seems like a sort of a logical place to do it. The issue then, of course, becomes Illini Grove, which may be a totally protected area. We can't even move the, you know, it's likely we wouldn't be able to move the retaining wall inward because of the legislative action that's been taken on that, which then gets you back on the road if you want to maintain any kind of bike thoroughfare through there. Otherwise, you know, from Illini Grove to the, to the north, from the north, from the north edge of Illini Grove all the way to the parking lot of the Jimmy John's, you're pretty open and without really affecting any trees to adding three feet. Or even, even a few more feet for that matter, you could actually go wider. So there are some possibilities that would be entertained. I think the reason that Danielle brings this up is that if you were to, you know, and again, it gets back to the issue of how many feet wide the lanes are. If we want to have lanes that are as wide as possible and we put a full five-foot bike lane for the northbound side, the east side of Lincoln, then we wouldn't have a lot of room on the, on the, on the west side of Lincoln to do a bike path there. We might not be able to do one. And the alternative here is because there aren't any streets that intersect with Lincoln, just the four sidewalks. On this end, you have one street that intersects, two if you count Pennsylvania, I'm sorry. There are fewer intersections here. You could do some kind of a multi-use path on this side so that you'd have bikes on, combined with pedestrians on the, on the west side. But on the east side, you'd have a separate, a separate route for bicycles to move.
Are there any other questions or comments on the amendment? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The amendment carries. So let's vote on the amended resolution. This is a motion by Mr. Bowers, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Any comments on the entire resolution? Mr. Smythe.
I wanted, I heard something about fire trucks and buses not being able to pass each other in through here. Is that a concern or where are we on that?
Would the, would Chief Munne like to comment?
Good evening. We've been watching this on the sidelines the last several weeks. There we go.
No, you're on.
Okay, thank you. We've been watching this on the sidelines the last several weeks. And we've only had some concerns, and we've been talking with Bill and his staff about checking the width of the lanes and so forth. And we understand the desires and the goals you're trying to achieve here. But just this afternoon and this evening, I've been able to finalize some numbers. And our concerns are with the three-lane process you're discussing. Two, two things happen. One, if we have an emergency response, police have fired down Lincoln. We're asking all the citizens to stop their cars, pull to the right-hand side of the lane, and wait for us to get by. That leaves us only the center of the street to get through on. One, if you put the islands in, we can't readily get through. If it's, if it's an average-sized car, we might be able to. And I understand the lane width from curb to side of island is seventeen feet. Our fire trucks from mirror to mirror, not from side of truck, but from mirror to mirror, are nine-and-a-half feet wide. I heard a few minutes ago that a bus is eight-foot something. From mirror to mirror, I was told they're ten. The trucks and the buses cannot pass if we have islands in place. That's just the only thing. And they may be able to adjust. We do deal with traffic throughout the city and all intersections. It's, so this is not an issue that we cannot overcome. But when you start putting several things together and with the density of traffic on this street, we're concerned about the likelihood of having it reoccurring at a higher rate. And, and, and kind of teasing the trot, excuse me, not teasing, but confusing the traveling public because they may not have places to move. So I just wanted to express my concerns that preference, I wish there were no islands in this process so that police can fire, can just readily move north and south down the street just to get through. And we do move through this, this area of the roadway quite often. And let alone if we stop, if we have calls on Lincoln Avenue, which again are not rare, we automatically close both outside lanes today. We have vehicles coming in from both the north and the south that stage on Lincoln. They have no place else to go. And then we do not, we wait to commit those units if there is a working incident. So quite often, it's only for a few moments. It may be five minutes or ten or something like that. But we have no place else. But again, at that point, if we're running to, say, Lincoln Avenue Residence Hall, we will shut down both lanes, north and south, with only the center lane available for the traveling public to finish. And again, you have islands in the way. And so those are just the operational things we wanted to bring to the surface for just discussion.
Ms. Chinowith.
Just a quick question. It was my understanding, well, having looked at different cities, I've seen islands, I think I'm thinking of Memphis right now, where the, there were raised, raised islands that had kind of a ribbing on them so that if cars went onto them, they could hear something. But it also looked like fire trucks could go right over these particular islands. They were fairly low. So I guess the question is, I, this was brought up a couple of weeks ago, that fire trucks might not have access. And I think if it's a raised curb issue, it could be a safety problem for fire trucks trying to straddle this, this curbed thing. But for, but I'm sure there's other kinds of technologies where it basically dissuades cars from going onto an island, but fire trucks are able to mount it.
I agree. And that was one of the things we mentioned a week or so back, is that if there needed to be islands, if there were mountable curbs, that would be something that would make it easier for us to slow down and proceed easily and not have a problem. I would only, and I would refer then to the traffic, the specialist, is if they see us go over, or they see a patrol car crossing an island, would we find some other citizens? I mean, it's just speculation, but I would have concerns about citizens following our example. But I don't think they would do it that readily. But that would be a workable option for us. Yeah.
Yeah, that was actually my same question. And I actually took advantage of that last night in Frankfurt, Illinois, and drove over one of those shoulder, you know, one of those medians. I mean, they're, they're designed to go over if you have to. And it worked just fine. I mean, other cars were doing it and it wasn't, it didn't say no left turn. So, you know, it was the only way to get out of where, you know, go where I wanted to go was to cross one of those. So it seemed to be designed to allow traffic out of the parking lots, but at the same time, also help guide cars to making left-hand turns. It worked, it worked really well. I guess the, the real issue then becomes, you know, if you guys are stopping and staging, you know, you clearly could be stopping away from the islands and staging away from the islands, leaving plenty, and the shoulders will still be there. So I don't, I don't really see a problem with that part of it.
And it may not be. We're just one of those things is not trained in traffic management. It's just one of the things that, as a layman, we're just seeing some of these things as parts A and parts B didn't quite fit for us quite that well. We just wanted to express our concerns so you can work with all the, all the facts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Well, all those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, we have reports of officers. Any reports of officers?
Mayor.
Yes.
We skipped over additions to the agenda, I think. And I would like to ask if council members would like to begin discussion of the, of the staff report to city goals at the end of this meeting? Or whether, and I know there's a lot of material to go through this weekend, plus that, and there's a lot of, or whether you'd like to tack it on to the end of next week's agenda and start discussion then?
Mr. Roberts.
I know that I haven't finished looking through it, and a week to do so would be very advantageous.
Okay, then, I see a lot of yeses. So I'd ask the clerk to simply add this as the last item on next week's agenda. Your chair, right? Yeah.
And while we're at the adjustments of the agenda, I would like to delete item number five under new business, appointments to the Champagne County Development Corporation. We have some more work that needs to be done in the form of that corporation, whether it should remain the same, whether we really need to make an appointment. So I'd like to delay that. Okay, any other additions or corrections to the agenda? All right, moving on to reports of officers.
Mayor.
Bruce Walden.
First of all, does everyone know John Snyder, our community development manager? He's been on six weeks. I just want to make sure you know his face. And from his appointment, I make sure everyone knows John. Okay, good. That's great. Sorry, John. I just want to talk a couple of minutes about economic development. You have on your table a report, a monthly report. I'm pleased that we have so much activity that's continuing right now. We're somewhat on a roll and it seems to be continuing. And I'm just so extremely pleased with that. Let me point out just a couple of things with, of interest. We are continuing to work with the Five Points West redevelopment plan. There's some activity that'll be taking place this month with the Park District. There's going to be a swap of some land for, for that particular project. But, but that's exciting. And talking with Joe, there's several things that are, that will, I think, projects there that will please us. The Gill Building, hopefully, in the next week or so, we'll be able to finish up the amended redevelopment agreement on Gill. There's some issues there in terms of the vacation of the city rideaway and technical issues with the development agreement. But I'm hoping that that can get worked out this week. If it does, you'll see it next week. Otherwise, you won't see it until January. And just touching on our previous conversation regarding Gill, that's the, that project needs to be amended because of certain site characteristics that prohibit new construction. So it's going to be a remodel and a expansion for a retail business in the existing building. So hopefully, that can get worked out and come to you next week. If not, we'll see it in January. Likewise, we're trying to finish up the Champagne Omnicare Labs, which is the new owner, proposed owner for the Michelle's Building next door, our new neighbor. So that one's in the works as well. And then we're also working on a fairly significant condominium annexation agreement on the north side of Urbana. So those are three fairly significant development agreement or annexation agreements that are in the works and will be coming. You might have noticed that we're suspending work on the municipal parking deck downtown for the winter. We'll have to come back at it when the weather changes. That's been a struggle relocating folks, but we've gotten through it so far. But we'll have to do it again. I won't say too much about North Cunningham. You can see what's going on with O'Brien's and all of that. We're beginning to work on conceptual plans with Menards. This is, of course, a fairly significant planning effort that's a top priority because our timeframe is so limited to have an impact on that corridor with one primary owner. It's listed in your council goals as a, as a top goal. It's goal number two C or something like that. So this one's going to require some attention, and we're doing so. Again, the Super Walmart's coming along and will be open in January. In terms of the university area, continue to work with developers and with folks related to the university on the second JSM development. That's coming along. And then a lot of excitement in Southeast Urbana. The Kmart building is down. We're continuing with our development agreement with, with Chris Creek. He's actively working on both the design of the residential projects that will take place there. The first piece would be a parking deck that would start in February or March. And of course, he's also committed to thirty thousand square foot of retail on Philo Road. And he has, fortunately, been successful in leasing efforts so far. There have been at least two leases signed for retail uses on Philo Road, which is very exciting. Tomorrow, Wednesday is the County Market Grand ribbon-cutting for the remodel of County Market. And then, of course, we have the Marathon Station on the corner. So that, the face of that is changing along with the Tatman Assisted Care Senior Facility. So there's, you know, So there's, you know, $50 million worth of development in and along that corridor. It's quite significant. Uh, it really, from a development point of view, uh, and considering where we were in our planning effort a year ago, we've got to be pleased with where we are. There's a lot of work to do, uh, with some problem properties. We understand that, but we, you know, as far as the development side of it, we're, we're very pleased. Um, I just wanted to mention those few things because I think they're important. I think people should know we're moving forward. So I'll just end that there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A question, Ms. Barnes?
Um, I notice with the Kmart building going down, which is great, uh, but there's not a fence around it. And typically, aren't there fences around areas where there's significant demolition? Or is that not a concern or?
I don't know. We'll look into that. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
And actually, Bruce, I get a lot of questions about the Kmart project, and I'm happy to describe it to people. But if you could say a little bit more about what's going up there, when it might appear, what some of the uses will be?
Okay, the Kmart project, um, as we call it, is a Chris Creek development. The development agreement, uh, describes or prescribes the land uses to be as follows. Uh, approximately 400 luxury-type apartments, uh, located, uh, in a multi-story building with underground parking or parking not visible from the street, a fairly significant, uh, complex that he describes as the, uh, a, a complex that will have more amenities for residents than any other complex in, in Champagne, Urbana. It'll also incorporate a, a retail element that would include approximately 30,000 square feet of retail uses, uh, that would face primarily Philo Road. Um, and so we have a mixed-use facility that's going in there. It's not, uh, just another apartment complex. It's a fairly significant and complicated project because of the mixed-use nature and the fact that it's a, um, a higher-end development. That's in a nutshell. Anybody want to add to that?
I was gonna-
Mr. Smythe?
Bruce, how, how, how close to the road in both directions of Philo and Florida will the new building be?
I would have to ask Bill that. He doesn't know. Why don't we resend you the site plan? How about that?
Well, I remember, I know what it looked like, but I just don't know how far back it was set.
Well, it's quite a base back from Philo Road. It's significantly back from Philo Road. I can't answer on Florida.
So there's going to be parking on the outside there?
For the retail, but the resident parking is incorporated underneath the building.
So the residents will probably be coming in from Florida?
Mm-hmm. There are, there's a, there is a, on the elevation, you'll see a grand entrance off of Florida that goes into the residential part.
On Philo, there's still the commercial sites fronting Philo, the Payless, the bank, and the veterinary hospital. So those would be, be behind that. Um, I don't know the dimension of the setback from Florida, but I think it's significant. The important thing about this building is it's going to be one, it's very urban in scale. It's one, it's a big, one building itself with second-level plazas. So it's kind of an exciting urban-scale mixed-use project with parking under, parking and retail underneath Plaza and pools on the first floor. And then I believe it's three stories of housing above that. So it's a real challenge for the designers, and we have site plans, and they continue to modify those. And I think it'll look great.
Question?
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Roberts?
Um, and it's, you were saying that the first thing that's going to happen is the parking garage will be, will be built. And now the parking was integrated into the building, wasn't it? Uh, the apartments are going to be above it. So how does the, how does that work out? Is that, is, are you really saying that the first module is going to be built with apartments above?
No, I, I'm just referencing conversation with Chris that on the, in terms of concrete work, he might be able to get part of the parking facility done since it's the lower-
The lower level? I see. Is that sub-level?
I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
I don't know if they're going to change the elevation of the site much at all, to tell you the truth.
It's a very nice project. I don't-
Thank you. Are there any other reports of officers? Okay, under new business, we have ordinance number 2005-12-174, an ordinance approving a major variance to allow an eight-foot, 53% encroachment into the required 15-foot front yard setback in the B3U General Business University zoning district at 1016 and 1014 West Main Street. This is case number ZBA-05-MAJ-6. Yes.
Hello. Uh, what we're looking at here are, um, again, really two different cases proposed by, uh, Howard Wakeland at Harvey and Main Street in Urbana. Uh, ZBA 05 major number six would be the eight-foot encroachment into the front yard setback on Main Street. And ZBA major 07 would be a 10-foot, uh, encroachment into the 15-foot front yard setback on Harvey Street. So we're looking at a very large proposal for a building, um, on a corner lot here. The building would go in in two phases over two years. Uh, the variances in this particular case here are only for the first building, first half of the building, to be built in phase one. Um, this is on the western half. Again, that's at the corner. The second phase, uh, is on the eastern half of the, I think it's four lots in there. Um, the second building again would be, uh, essentially a mirror image of the first one. Uh, on November 16th, the ZBA voted three to one to recommend approval in this case, uh, in these cases to the city council. Um, basically what we were looking at here is an area in, uh, the north campus of the University of Illinois. That surrounding area has very high densities in, uh, building coverage, either in large university structures or apartment buildings. Uh, one of the single most obvious uses for land in the area is for multifamily apartments to service students for the university. Um, the city has goals in our comprehensive plan for higher density in this area, uh, again, to provide student housing, uh, and a part to alleviate some of the pressure for higher-density development off this site, uh, further east of Lincoln Avenue. Um, I know you've all closely read your, your memo here. Um, we've got six different variance criteria. I'm not going to read it in this case, but I'm sure we'll discuss them soon. Um, options in either of these cases is to grant the variance, uh, grant the variances with tur, certain terms or conditions, or to deny the variance request. In each of these cases, uh, staff recommends, uh, that, and the ZBA voted three to one to recommend approval, uh, with following conditions. Number one, that with respect to the front yard setback, the development on the site must generally conform to the site plan. And number two, that the project would conform to all other applicable zoning and building code regulations, including open space and parking requirements. Um, I'll leave it at that and we'll ask for questions. We have representatives of the builder here with us today.
Uh, would Mr. Fell and Mr. Conway like to come up? Please state your name and your address, your business.
My name is Brian Conway. I'm at 2606 Galen Drive, Champagne.
Andrew Fell, 302 West Hill, Champagne. I'm the architect for the project. Um, Brian has some, uh, photographs of some buildings that were on the site that have been torn down, which I think will help to illustrate what our thought process was for requesting the variance. Um, essentially, the buildings that were existing there along Main Street and Harvey were built right up to the sidewalk with so, and the north building on Harvey Street still remains, and, and the one south of that was exactly the same. They're built right up to the sidewalk, no setbacks at all. And, uh, part of my job as the architect is to, uh, try to find a compromise between aesthetics and density to make this an economically viable project for the owner. And, uh, quite frankly, it, it's primarily a matter of density. And conforming to the, to the setbacks in the zoning ordinance doesn't quite get us to the z, density that makes this as viable a project as the owner would like. So we're essentially asking for a compromise between what the existing conditions were and what the zoning ordinance requires. I'll be happy to answer any questions so that I can-
Ms. Chinowith?
Yes, I have a question for staff, um, on this, uh, which is in response to statements made by Mr. Fell. It's my understanding that porches, which is what is shown here going up to the sidewalk, that, that porches aren't actually included in setback when building for residential, and that that's why we see, um, the structure go to 15 feet, but then the porch continues. Is that, is that correct with our current, like, if we were to rebuild a house here, would a porch be allowed to encroach into the setback or not?
I do not have my ordinance with me. If I remember correctly, um, open and unenclosed porches can encroach, um, a certain amount depending upon the district, but I, I would really have to look back at the ordinance.
Okay.
Libby Tyler?
That's true. If it's enclosed, then it cannot encroach. If it's an open porch, it can. Of course, there's many different, um, dates of structures in this area, so you won't see a consistent setback necessarily.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Yeah, I could ask a quick question to, to Andrew and Brian. What, um, other than the porches in the pictures you've shown us, is particular about this property that you requested the variance and that, you know, complying with the normal setback isn't appropriate?
Well, I'm not sure. I would say it's a matter of whether it's appropriate or not. Certainly, a structure can be built on the site that conforms to the setback. But the, the essential, uh, matter for us is, is making this an economically viable project. And that depends greatly on the density. We could, uh, probably in, in all likelihood, we could, we could maintain the density we have, but that greatly diminishes the quality of the units that we're providing. They're closer together, the windows are on top of each other, the corridors are smaller, and that type of thing. So it, so in a way, it's a compromise between the, the quality of living environment we'd like to provide, balancing it with the density that we need to make the project an economically viable one.
If I could point out before my voice goes again, excuse me. If you look along the side of the greenhouse, 1016 West Main, you can see the, uh, brick sidewalk is basically touching the house. It's harder to see in the 304 Harvey, uh, photograph. I wish I had better photographs. Uh, but you can kind of see it's, uh, right up against that wall there. Um, for us, you know, we'd love to put up a huge crane and get financing from a big Chicago bank and put up something, you know, 10 stories, but we're a family operation and, uh, uh, we can't pull that off. So, um, because of the area, I actually lived at 204 Harvey, block south for quite a while, uh, years ago, when it was a house. And, uh, it's, I've shown apartments there for years. It's a very low-traffic area. It's all basically residents.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Yeah, one other question I have is, would this project here, um, which would, I think, basically mean that this whole block would then be sort of one integrated Wakeland apartment project, would this project here support any retail or commercial uses? Is, is, are those uses that you have ever included in other projects?
We haven't included it ourselves. Uh, actually, the people we talked to find it's hard to fill it up. We'd love to have retail. We have some retail over on Lincoln and University. But, uh, our goal is probably to put our own office over there eventually, um, if anything. Uh, like I said, I'd love to see retail, but I don't know, we're, we're, we're too small to have it not work.
Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Ms. Barnes? Is there a second? There's not a second, I guess. So I guess we can't vote on it.
Well, can we keep discussing it then?
I think we should, we'll, we'll do is move on to ordinance number 2005-12-175. Um, would you like to start off the discussion on that one? You've sort of alluded to it already. Is it, have you already covered your points on it or?
Um, I pretty much covered the points there. The two cases are, you know, close to identical. For the first one that you just voted on, um, again, that's an encroachment of eight feet into the front yard setback on Main Street, uh, the major east-west, uh, street. Um, our north-south street, uh, is Harvey Street. That's the one in the second case. Um, it's an encroachment of 10 feet into the 15-foot front yard setback. Um, the parameters are, are really essentially the same. Um, again, this particular case is the first of a two-phase project. Um, and because this is a corner and because of this is the western extremity, uh, in KCBA 05 major seven, this, you know, there's this encroachment, potential encroachment into the front yard setback. In phase two, there wouldn't be an encroachment because it, uh, backs right up to, um, another, uh, residential property on the east end. There really isn't much else I could, I can say about it.
Okay. Mr. Bowers-Sachs has a question.
Um, is there some plan, and maybe both Libby and Paul, you could speak to this, to update the B3U zoning so that setbacks would be reduced? Um, because part of the language here really spoke to the fact that we want to encourage more density and more urbanism in this B3U neighborhood near campus. Is there in the four-to-six-month timeframe a plan for making these sorts of setback changes in this neighborhood?
It's possibly something that could come out in, of the larger goal to implement the comprehensive plan as part of a zoning ordinance update. There's many other ways that our zoning districts don't, that don't particularly match our comprehensive plan goals. This is probably one of the, the lesser, um, disconnects between the two documents. We have an alternative, which is a CCD zone, and that does have lesser setbacks. However, it has some other offsets. It requires a special use permit and has different parking requirements, but it's very similar to the B3U. So we do have an alternative zoning designation, um, that can be looked at in these areas. One of the other things we need probably to look at with the comprehensive plan is we encourage mixed use, but that's not always going to make sense on all these minor streets. We can't have retail and mixed use on all these streets, you know, on Lincoln and University and some of the major streets. It makes a lot of sense. So, and it, it works at Gregory. So I, I think in general, yes, it could be part of our implementation of the comprehensive plan, but it wasn't one of the major ones that we had looked at.
And what would the timeline be like for any changes to B3U?
Well, I probably have a suggestion in the council goals response. And I think some of these fell out in that two-to-three-year range there. So.
Ms. Barnes?
Um, yes. Um, our staff has recommended this to us. And from way, the way I see it, I see a lot of positives about this project. Uh, number one, it, um, I think, uh, Mr. Wakeland and Wakeland Properties has a reputation for being a good landlord and popular with students and taking reasonable care of his property. And I think that's a real positive for the city of Urbana. Number two, it improves our tax base. And number three, I, I believe from looking at his pictures and my own travels down those two streets, it would, um, my hope would be that the building would improve the looks of the area, um, as opposed to what we have right now. And, um, so I guess I would just like to hear from other council members who, uh, chose not to second this motion, what are the downsides to saying yes? And I think it's important for us to weigh the downsides of saying yes with the positives, I mean, downsides of saying yes with the positives of saying yes.
I think I could show some-
Mr. Smythe?
This is the property, uh, it's been torn down. If you look on the screen, uh, the, porch, uh, you, the, uh, previous picture here.
Could you use the microphone, please?
Yeah, there we go. Okay. Um, this is the, the, the foundation corner right here. You know, there's the sidewalk as, on, on the Harvey side. And then this is the, uh, the foundation that, that was, uh, there. And you can see there's a, sort of like, this was a, a cement- And you can see there's a, sort of like, this was a cement corner piece, a couple feet wide, and there's another one at the other corner down here. This part coming in from the sidewalk, you've got a one-foot setback that is part of the city's right away. They're asking for another seven feet. There's a piece of string going this way and this way that marks the area that they would be building to. So, the new building would be all the way to this, you can just barely see it on my screen, it's obvious, but it's not here. So, the new property would go out to here, basically this corner. There's a place where the strings intersect, and that's the proposed space. If you look down the street, this is a building at the far, at the other corner, which I'll get to, I've got a picture up, that's set 15 feet back. All these other buildings are 15 feet back. This one is actually a little further back, this brick one. This is the view across the street. This is a property owned by Kevin Hunzinger. This is a 15-foot setback from the sidewalk, directly opposite, going south. This is looking down the street to the east, again, along the Hunzinger property. All the properties across the street are 15-foot setback. Some of them have some landscaping, many of them do not. This is looking down the proposed setback. Here's the string that I mentioned. So, the new building would stick out basically here, and remember, their proposal is to tear down these two houses, these two buildings here. So, basically, would stick out past these trees that are right at the border of the existing Wakeland property at the east end and the proposed new building. So, the new building sticks out, you know, seven or eight feet further than the other building. Looking to the, going to the street to the north, Clark, all of these buildings, there are two houses here on the right, but then all of the apartment buildings on both sides of the street are 15-foot setback. It was a fun day to go bicycling. This is the property that I mentioned on the other end of the proposed building. This is a Wakeland building. It's got a 15-foot setback from both sidewalks. It's a very utilitarian-looking building. There are no, there's no landscaping going either way. I suspect the new building would, you know, the new building would come out, you know, basically out to here, again, looking very similar. Most of the Wakeland properties look very much like this one. And this is a view to the north, again, 15-foot setback. And you can see all the other buildings, all the other buildings in this area are all built 15-foot setback. This is an existing building that I would imagine would be pretty much the same size of a proposed building in the existing space if all four of the properties that Mr. Wakeland owns got torn down. And that's something, so, those were the pictures.
So, Mr. Lewis?
This is primarily directed to staff in terms of the fundamental reasons for the setbacks that we're talking about, especially on corner lots. I understand one of the reasons for that was to provide sightlines for oncoming traffic in both directions. Is that true?
I think that's one reason for setbacks, but we also control those with our site visibility ordinance. So, that, for this particular case, that was not considered an issue, but that is one reason for setbacks in addition to open space, aesthetics, setting a tone. Kind of your suburban or more rural look will have deeper setbacks. More stately homes will have a deeper setback. Your more urban areas, like Gregory Place, has a lesser setback or Main Street. So, creates a character along with the visibility and law and space, and just a variety of factors.
Ms. Barnes?
So, after you shared that, Charlie, is the downside then just that it's not consistent with the rest of the area?
Well, I think it goes back to an issue of all the other properties, including Mr. Wakeland's other properties, all conform to the existing 15-foot setback. All the new construction conforms to that. There are comments in the minutes of the zoning appeal meeting that Mr. Kruegers in particular come to mind, where he objects to this simply as, you know, basically additional, the variance is being provided simply so that the owner of the property can maximize his profit and that there are no businesses being located in this facility. Gregory, the Gregory Place apartments were built, it's a very different, it's a very, it truly is a more urban environment over there with the, right in the middle of all the university buildings, and you've got retail on the first floor. This has no retail. It's just like all the other apartment buildings in the area. I'm having a problem seeing how this is an exceptional case that, for which we need to do a variance. And I guess, going along with the lines of what Brandon said earlier, is that if we want to change the rules, we need to make it consistent so that everybody can take advantage of this, and we need to go in not piecemeal, but we need to consider the long-term implications of changing the setback from 15 feet. And I'm not quite done. I personally like to have green space. Whether that green space is five feet, 10 feet, 15 feet, I'm not sure. I know that I don't like a B4 zoning where there's no setback, you know, where you build literally to the sidewalk with no green space. But I think that, you know, we don't want to go completely urban and pave everything over. I think we, you know, this is a residential area. We do need to provide for some green space, you know, and what that amount needs to be, I don't know at this point, but I don't think we can sort of piecemeal start down the path of changing our zoning without thinking it through and having a consistent policy for everybody.
Mr. Bowers, thanks.
Yeah, I contacted council members with some of my concerns about this, and I will be very brief in stating where I stand now and what I learned after some discussions today with staff, who were very helpful. Thank you, Paul and Robert and Matt and everyone who I spoke to today. The basic question in granting any variance, to me, is what is special about this property such that we should allow them to encroach or change the rules that everyone else has to follow in a way that doesn't hurt the neighborhood? And in this text, Points 1 and 2 of the Criteria for Giving a Variance ask those exact questions. You know, what is it? What are the special circumstances? And in this text, I don't see that answered. I don't see what's special about these properties. So, my concern is that the same thing could apply to any corner lot anywhere in the B3U district. My other concern is that the stated goal of B3U is to be more urban and mixed use and that that isn't a component of the project. I don't support the wording then as written because I think it's just too broad. We would be allowing any corner lot in a B3U to do the same thing. We'd be really changing the rules of the game, and that is not fair to other developers. That is, you know, changing the rules piecemeal without really thinking about what are all the changes to B3U, like changes in the FAR or the open space ratio or the parking, that we would need to really get to our goals for this district. And I think it also leaves us open to legal problems by creating a variance that's just broad in the criteria that we've set forth, such that it could be applied to anyone in town who might come along and say they wish to have such an encroachment. Given that, I don't support the text as written, especially because of Criteria 1 and 2, and I see two options after talking to staff and trying to understand this today. The first option is a zoning change. I think in talking to staff, they really felt that this encroachment into the setback and a reduced setback is good for this district, and it's what we want in B3U. We're a block from WILL and Beckman and the Siebel Center, and we want a more urban area. We want added density of housing so that we can really fill the need for housing near the U of I. And if that's what we want, we should do that the right way with a zoning amendment, and so I would support that certainly. And I would support this if we were going to do a zoning amendment in the very near term so that we didn't have this kind of oddball variance hanging out there for long. But if we're two or three years off, then I really do have a concern. The second solution would be that I would support this if we added a condition that the developers could build this project with some retail or commercial component, but I know in discussing with staff that that's hard and that, you know, on this corner, on Harvey Street, you know, we really want to think about what could the market support there. There's already been difficulty in renting some of the spaces in the parking deck that the U of I built as a mixed-use project. Those are the two circumstances under which I could support this. If we're doing a zoning amendment, or we're doing it in the very near term, four to six months, or if we would add a condition that this be a mixed-use project. Thank you.
Mr. Roberts?
When this, when I was reviewing the variance request, I had a couple of different First, that when I went out to view the property, I saw that every building within two blocks in any direction was able to meet the 15-foot setback without a problem. Now, I did not see what these houses looked like when they existed before they were torn down on the lot, but, again, these houses are remnants from a very previous problem we were built far before the zoning ordinance was put into effect. But now, we do have a zoning ordinance for the city. All the construction of buildings by Mr. Wakeland and other lengths of the street comply with the setback, and I can't picture the problem, a special problem, on the corner lot that would make it any different. I think that the developer who is interested in pursuing a construction in the city has availability of what the zoning requirements are, the setback requirements, the number of parking spaces required for this development. I think these are all elements of public knowledge or can be provided by the planning division and the staff in the city. And so, it would seem that it would be appropriate for the developer, any developer who would start a project in the city, would become knowledgeable of what the parameters allowed are for given property and make a determination first if it's a viable project for them to undertake, and, secondly, to construct their units in a way that actually meets the ordinances of the city. Why would a developer pursue a project that required a variance to complete? On the application for a variance, item number one, it has a statement that because the land prices there are very high, 1.5 million per acre, and that there are parking requirements that are stringent, the setback request is asked for because you couldn't produce a viable project without these, concerning these limitations. And I guess my comment is that knowing what the price of the property is and knowing what the parking restrictions are for a given number of units is the developer's responsibility. He should be able to meet the required ordinance of the city. And we can't be, I think it's very important and positive that all developments receive remuneration for their construction. I mean, I think, being profitable is, of course, expected, but the city can't be responsible for the success or failure in profit for every project that is proposed. And I think that by requiring variance, it puts the burden of the success for the developer to maximize his profit on the shoulders of the city, and I think that's ridiculous. That's not appropriate, I don't think. The city's interested in providing livable, appealing living space with the green space, appropriate sidewalk space, trees and other amenities which make the community appreciated and beautiful for the residents of the city, and that's why we do have these setbacks. So, I think, for me, the reasons that were proposed just don't make a strong enough case to condone a variance. And I would even suggest that the Zoning Board of Appeals has, there was discussion about some of these issues, but they don't seem to have the strength to direct the city, to protect the city ordinances and to protect the quality of construction in the city. So, it comes ultimately to the city council to make some of these decisions for them almost, and I think that greater thought would be appropriate. Now, I think that there are, probably one of the grittiest questions that a developer has to face is finding appropriate parking spots. You want to make a certain number of units, and you have only a certain amount of acreage on your property, can you provide the parking required? On the first floor of your unit, you have two wheelchair-accessible apartments and an open space of some undetermined use, and I'm thinking that there might be some adjustment to the configuration of the approach for the lower apartments that can be made so that you can meet your parking requirements for that property without encroaching into the city right away. So, these are my thoughts. I emailed the city council members with some of them, and I think that there are issues that need to be looked at in terms of zoning as well.
Ms. Barnes?
Brandon, you mentioned a potential legal concern. I guess I'd like, Jim, if you would, address that. Is there a concern to us authorizing this special use permit in light of the fact that past developers have not had that same advantage or asked for it?
A variance by its very nature is particular to that property. There may be issues if the exceptions are general enough that they can be arguably applied to other properties, but your community development department has indicated its press say in its memo why they think that this is particular to this area. In addition, these areas, issues of variances in this kind of a project usually are complicated when you have a corner situation because you're getting hit with a variance from both sides. Personally, I don't think that there's a legal issue of challenge just because you were to grant this particular variance. I do think that some of the general policy issues that you are addressing and talking about possible changes in zoning ordinance are appropriate considerations to take into account for the future. That does not change, however, the particularities of this example before you.
Ms. Barnes? I still speak in favor of this. Our community development staff have researched this and partnered with the developer, and they have seen it as in the community's best interest to proceed with this project, and I continue to support it and hope that someone else might join me.
Ms. Chinoweth?
Just, if we're going to, it was clear when I first read this and clear when I looked at the location that this is not a variance but a zoning amendment, and if we want to change the rules, let's change them for everybody. That's what's fair. So, there are lots of corner lots in this area. If we want to revisit B3U, let's revisit it. I would not support getting rid of all green space, but I would consider something, especially if it included design requirements or perks for business, but at this point, it just, it was, there is not a compelling case for a special circumstance here. I would strongly recommend that Wakeland Properties work with the city to look at the B3U zoning and consider changes to it, but it, what do I tell Kevin Hunzinger, who lives, who built a very similar building across the street not so long ago, when he asked, why they get it and I didn't, kind of thing? He may not have a legal issue, but I will tell you, based on looking at this, I'm not a lawyer, but I understand my role here as a council member, if we pass this, I think we have to provide this on most corners in B3U, and I'm not prepared to do that. So, I think, I can't support it this time, but it's no comment on the particular project that's before us at all. In fact, I don't think I have a responsibility or a, I don't, it is important that I not comment on the particular project. It's look who it is, how well they govern themselves as a landlord, owner, et cetera, so, that's all.
Mr. Fell, did you want to make a response to that? Mr. Phil, did you want to make a response to that?
I'd like to just, few of the comments came by the council, so, so, we're clear on what we're trying to do. We're not asking for a variance on the open space, any parking, all those requirements would be met within zoning. And although it, perhaps it shouldn't make a difference, I'm here.
No, because this is the first project I've done for Howard. And I think I'm here because he doesn't want to build a vinyl box like it's on the other corner. And, so, we're, you know, we're attempting to do something a little better, and we're just asking for, you know, a little help from the city. I also, let me correct me if I'm wrong, but if we, if we change the use, the zoning of this project, we're gonna be closer to the street. For me, I think it's five feet, isn't the setback five feet on that other?
The CCV?
Yeah.
Sorry. Yes.
So, if you want to rezone it, your concerns will be heightened, because we'll be closer to the street. And I guarantee you that if we change the use and we can build five feet from the setback, we'll build five feet from the setback. So it's, we're trying to, we're trying to have everybody win here.
Mr. Smythe is next.
Since there is an emotion on the floor there, I'm not sure what the rules are that govern this kind of discussion, but we probably should limit each of ourselves to two sets each, more or less. The point of the pictures that I showed was that all of the other properties in this area are 15-foot setback, including Mr. Wakeland's other properties. And this isn't the only other property he has on a corner. He's got a number of buildings that go to the corners. It looks like he owns the corner of Clark and Harvey as well, given some of the names on the, yeah, so. It may very well be that Mr. Wakeland owns the entire block. No, okay. He just owns a big portion of it, then. The size of what could be built here, there might be a much better project that has setbacks that go along with the rest of the neighborhood if more of his properties were to come down as part of this. I know there's an alleyway down the middle, one of the last alleyways involved here. And I don't know if Mr. Wakeland owns the properties north of the alley, those two, there's three houses there, one that faces Harvey, there's one at the corner of Harvey and Clark, and there's one in from Harvey and Clark. And then there are two, older apartment buildings that have the management company name on it that also does the management of his other buildings.
Just the Clark, just north of this across the alley, it's 306 Harvey and 1011 Clark, but the other building, the building.
Just the two, just those two houses there, yeah.
The house on one lot.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm, like Danielle, I'm not comfortable with changing what essentially is the zoning for this neighborhood on the fly like this, when we've had recently built properties that conform to the setback. And I personally, five feet is probably not enough for my tastes, but, you know, seven or eight feet might be okay. I think there's some discussions that we need to have there. But so, but, so we need, and that's, that's the sort of thing here, that's why we need to take this to a full zoning change type approach. Now, long-term, it may be that businesses would be viable as the university builds up here, as we learn from the mistakes of the university of putting their business stuff on the backside of the building instead of on the university avenue side. You know, there are different things we can learn here. There was, there was, there was business in this area. Bruce Krueger has his bike shop across the street diagonally. There used to be an Oriental Food Store in the parking lot immediately to the, to the west of this. There have been some viable businesses in here, I'm not sure. It may be that the time isn't right for a Gregory Street-type building here with business on the first floor. But, but clearly, you know, that's the direction the comp plan is pushing us in for this area. It's, it's something that I think we need to look at. So I, along with Danielle, I think we need to go back and look at the zoning for the entire area so that everybody has a level playing field, and we can go to the people who built recently and say, well, we are changing the rules, we're gonna change them for you too in the future for other properties you own. But we can't make an exception and do it on the fly right now.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Barnes moves, is there a second? Okay, we don't, we don't have a second. We've had a thorough discussion, however, without having a second. Thank you very much for coming, and I'm sure we'll, we'll talk about this some more. Okay, moving on, we have resolution number 2005-12-023R, a resolution certifying a community housing development organization for the Urbana Home Consortium for fiscal 2005, 2006 Urban League of Champaign County Development Corporation. Mr. Schneider?
Good evening. This resolution, if you approve it, you would authorize the certification of the Urban League of Champaign County Development Corporation to be certified as a community housing development organization within the Urbana Home Consortium. This would allow them to access up to $25,000 of operating funds to help them develop affordable housing in the community. That was funding that was approved in the annual action plan for fiscal year 2005, 2006. We have in our audience Gene Alge, the president of the Urban League of Champaign County Development Corporation, if you have any questions for her. The Community Development Commission recommended that council approve this resolution. So.
Any questions?
Move approval?
Second.
Mr. Smythe moves approval, seconded by Ms. Chinowith. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Next, we have ordinance number 2005-12-176, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization developer agreement with the Urban League of Champaign County Development Corporation. This is lease purchase program fiscal 2005, 2006. Mr. Schneider?
This is with, an agreement with the Urban League Development Corporation. And what it would do, approval of this, would allocate $80,000 in home funding to assist four buyers of affordable housing, lease purchase, the lease purchase program that the Urban League has operated for two years now. And what this does is allows people who are not able to purchase outright, the opportunity to basically lease, lease a property until they get into a financial situation where they can purchase it. And that's, and each loan or each down payment assistance would be a 10-year affordability period, a loan of up to $20,000 for each recipient. I would direct your attention to page three due to a copying glitch. Page three appears to be blank in your copy, but I substituted a page three and four. Should be up there at your.
Did everyone get that?
It did.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Smythe, seconded by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please call the roll? Councilmembers Barnes?
Yes.
Bowersox?
Yes.
Chinowith?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Smythe?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved, the ordinance is approved, and Mr. Smythe?
Real quickly, thanks, unrelated. I think there may be some concern about us not having taken a vote with respect to the zoning board of appeal issues that came before us. I don't know whether we're required to take a vote on this or not. And I don't know if Jim is quickly checking that or not. Do we need, do we need to take a five-minute recess so you can check this out? Okay, I move a five-minute recess.
Second.
Second.
All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. All right, we're in recess for five minutes.